For the regular board meeting of the Prowl River County School District, held May 14th, 2020, and then 5:30 PM. I would like to ask the implication given by Mr. Fraser. Do you think it is a break?
This is about to answer. Heavenly Father, we come at this moment giving you all praises, glory, and honor. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for this day. We ask that you will be amongst us, Heavenly Father, that we take up the business of the school district. We come right now and ask you to watch over us as a board, and also watch over us as a country, Heavenly Father, as we go through these significant issues. We ask you to bless our children, Heavenly Father, as they continue to deal with this unusual school year, Heavenly Father. Bless them and guide them as they go into different endeavors. And as we deliberate tonight, Heavenly Father, we ask you to be amongst us, Heavenly Father. And it's important to listen on this, Heavenly Father, so that everything we do is about doing the best thing for this school district and for this community, Heavenly Father. We give you praise, glory, and honor right now, and we lean and depend on you. And we ask you right now just to touch our hearts, Heavenly Father, so we can congregate here, Heavenly Father, as Christian brothers and sisters. But of all things, we give praise and glory unto your son who died on the cross, for it is through him all things possible. We love you, and we give you this honor in his name. Amen.
Mr. Jones, Colonel Ryder has some special guests that will be leading us in our pledge of allegiance tonight. So I'll ask Ms. Pulson at this time if she can bring up Colonel Ryder.
In the background for the shot, we're starting right now. Good evening, y'all. Can you hear me okay? Is the audio good?
Can't do anything. Colonel Ryder, are you there?
Colonel Ryder, with us.
Okay. School Board members, it's a great honor to be with you tonight. Thank you for this privilege. It's my privilege to introduce Johnny Perkins, a junior, who will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, my fellow Americans. Thank you for this high privilege of being here to represent the PRC community. Please join me in the pledge. Ready? Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and God we trust.
Thank you, and God bless.
I know you hit it. Love, but he just happened to capture you.
John, we're back. Okay, we'll proceed on. Public comments, item three. There are no public comments. Consider the agenda, item four. We do have some changes presented by Ms. Sherry. Excuse me. We're going to move item 12 to number 14 and line item 13 to line item 15. And that will make line item 12, we consider approving to transfer four mobile classroom units to Hazelhurst School District at no cost to Prowl River County School District. And then line item 13, consider approving the construction agreement with Colony Construction for the South Carrier Campus Project. Please make note of those changes.
I have a question. Is that the thing we just got an email? Was that the contract?
Yes.
Is that time sensitive?
Sir?
Is it time sensitive? Because really, we didn't get a chance to look at it.
Yes, sir. It is time sensitive. You can table it if you'd like, but it's going to table construction beginning for the amount of time that you do table it. We do have Mr. Warren that can answer any questions. Mr. Keith, our attorney, is involved in those contracts as well, so he reviews all of them. But that's entirely up to the board.
So that's the contract for the construction on the multiple purpose?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
We can discuss it here. Okay. Any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Okay, all in favor of the agenda is modified? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Motion in a second.
Do we have a motion in a second? We don't have a motion in a second. A motion in a second. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Thank you, Ms. Burge, for the second. Now.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to consider approving the board minutes for April 16th as reported.
I make a motion that we consider approving the board minutes for April 16th, 2020, as recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Any questions or discussions on the minutes? Call for a vote then. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, superintendent's report. Mr. Lumpkin?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'd like to welcome everyone to our maiden board meeting. Thank you for being patient through our technical difficulties with our YouTube Live. Hopefully, this is going to be a better format for our community to view our board meetings in the future. We're really excited about this resource that will be available to our community this month and in the future. Our student school board representative, Ms. Patricia Bowden, due to the pandemic, she's not going to be with us tonight. But we'll try to get her back. This is the last month of the year, and I know we want to recognize her properly, so we will definitely do that when we get back to some normalcy here with our board meetings. So we look forward to recognizing Patricia and sending her off with the proper farewell. Written reports, you have your monthly financial written reports there. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to shoot us an email, and we will answer those questions accordingly. At this time, we have a construction update that I'm going to ask Mr. Warren Bowen to give us a lot of information this month on our bond construction. And Ms. Pulson is going to be pulling up Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bowen, can you hear us?
I can. I'm right here with you.
All speaking. Well, the floor is yours.
Well, I'm going to try to take the floor, I guess. Did that, you guys see me there? Well, certainly, good evening to everyone. Just want to make sure that you guys are up to date on everything I have, we have going on. I'll start out with the PRC Elementary Campus, the A/B Building. The slab is, has been poured, and electrical is ongoing. The red iron has been erected, and the purlins installed. It's good. CMU installation has begun in the spare classrooms. This is as far as we've gotten on the particular A-B building, which is a real lot. That means that the structural system is basically put together, which is really good. The B/C building, the B/C building, the pre-engineered metal building is complete, which is good. The CMU blocks, walls are being completed, and the roof system is about 60% complete on that one as well. The rough plumbing and electrical has been completed. Area of the building has, in the area that has roof covering, to the prime, and the HVAC is installed in the ceiling system. So it's moving on fairly strong. The conditioning unit pads have been poured, and the stoops on the rear building have been poured as well. On the AKA and the cafeteria building, the roof system has been completed. Disin units have been installed. All the walls have been primed, and the handicap railing system is being installed at all stairs and ramps. The electrical wiring is being pulled throughout the building. Of course, you know, the conduit was in place before that started, so they're literally pulling wire now. The freezer has been wired, but not engaged just yet. The stairs and handicap ramps at the front of the entry have been pulled, but no safety railing installed at this particular point. Retainer wall at the cafeteria has been formed and poured and brick, and brick veneer is complete. On the PRC Middle School, getting to the other campus, the middle school is complete, that's the final grading, and some of the floor covering in the media library area and the punch-out list. We're moving on pretty good with the middle school. You know, people say, hello, we should approve the pattern of the floor covering, which, TJ, we appreciate that. The floor guys put the area, and we're starting tomorrow morning on the 15th. They propose to be finished around on that same day, on the same date as well. The in the media library area has been modified per the librarian request. The ceiling has to be lowered so the librarian can see over the top of it. That's not a problem, though. The ones that came in Tuesday and are now installed in the glass, they're installed on Friday, the 15th. Our school campus, the pre-engineered metal building is complete, and the roof is dry in. That's a good thing, especially during this season. The CMU block, the concrete block are complete. The stone on the exterior is complete, is complete, and the brick veneer has been completed on the east and west side of the building. The brick veneer on the north and north side of the building, installation had, it began on today. Rough plumbing, plumbing, electrical are complete. All the walls primed and broken frames painted. The air running units have been installed in the classrooms, and the plenums are being installed today. Lines are being ran and all, and the wrapping for the HVAC is about complete. The plumbing has also been done. The wiring is being pulled, electrical panel to all rooms, and cleanup on the campus is ongoing. And that's in general for both campuses as what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. As you can see, school board members, there's a lot of construction that's been completed over the last month on the McNeil campus, as well as the Carrier Campus, the middle school and the high school. And we're looking forward to getting that third and final phase in place as we move forward this month. So without further ado, any questions for Mr. Warren on construction updates?
Yeah, just, do you have any idea in terms of when we might see the completion of these projects, something you may have a little accelerator schedule?
Yes, sir. Let me give you some dates that we have right now that are in line with what our contractors and I, we have all discussed. On the elementary, and the dates vary now. So on the elementary campus, the A&amp;B Building, we expect in July, around July, the end of July, July 31st, 2020, what they're estimating on that time. But the B/C Building, around June the 7th. The A-Building, cafeteria and AK Building, around June the 4th of 2020. The middle school, the middle school is, 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 on May the 25th of 2020. The high school, around July 28th, 2020, and the F-Building, around July 1st of 2020. And, Mr. Lumpkin, I could forward those dates and times to you on tomorrow.
Go back to the, Mr. Warren, go back to the middle school building, did you say, May 25th?
Yes, sir. And this is the reason why, they are actually, they are actually doing the punch, they are punching this on the 25th right now. We had to punch this. Even though we got a couple other small things to do, we are actually working on the punch this on the middle school as we speak.
Right. That's the middle school building, that's the one that's going, the closing.
Yes, sir.
I toured it today, as a matter of fact.
What about that high school building, the one toward the front of the building?
The high school building towards the front of Highway 11, what was the date on it? It was July.
The high school building date is July 28th of 2020. Yes, sir.
So that's all of them may pull the startup school next year.
Yes, sir. That is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other questions for Mr. Bowen? All right. He will remain on the line for us, Mr. Bowen, because we have some bond construction items to consider for approval. So we'll say goodbye for just a second, stay on the meeting, because we'll be coming back to.
Yes, sir.
All right?
You got it.
We have no recognitions this month, Mr. Jones. The district improvement plan data report, we do not have a report due to our school closure again this month. Announcements and upcoming activities, the governor, Tate Reeves, did extend the safer-at-home order. He extended that through May 25th with social distancing guidelines. So all our school districts' offices, we are open now from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and we are using social distancing guidelines for those two hours. But we are available, of course, 24/7 through email and phone calls. Our community and parents can leave messages, and we call them back during those two hours each day, Monday through Friday. Distance learning will continue through the end of the school year, and that is upon us. That's next Friday, May 22nd, will be our last regular scheduled day of school. But, so our distance learning will continue, that's our online virtual format through Google Classroom, and also our instructional packets for students who do not have internet access. Our second round, which was the second portion, the last four weeks of the school year, those instructional packets were available beginning on April 22nd. That takes those students through the end of the school year, okay? We will have a summer distance learning program that will be available to our parents as well, and we will do it the same way. It'll be another four weeks of instructional material through online version through Google Classroom, as well as another four weeks of instructional packets that they can pick up at the school as well, for our parents to take advantage of, for the students over the summer months. They'll have four weeks of work that they can do at any point in time through those two months over the summer. And that will be available very, very soon for our parents. Our student feeding program continues through the end of the school year, which it'll conclude next week. We've been feeding Tuesdays and Thursdays at three locations, and that will conclude. Next Thursday will be our last day of the student feeding program, and that's Thursday, May the 21st. We'll tell you that we, our numbers have been decreasing on the amount of people that's been coming through. Had a tremendous amount in the beginning, and it has just slowly declined. We still are serving lunches, and we still have people taking advantage, but I do want to inform you that it has, that number has declined, especially over the last two weeks. I do want to give you some information, and I'm going to let Dr. Bowen, our high school principal, talk to you about some upcoming events for our seniors. We're really excited about that, as you know. With the safer-at-home order extended through May 25th, then, of course, we will not be having our regular graduation ceremony that was scheduled for May the 22nd. We're still committed. Our students want a traditional graduation ceremony, so we're committed to making that happen. And as soon as we're allowed to gather with a large assembly, we will set that date, and we will set it in plenty of time for those seniors to get the information out and make plans to attend that, and their family members to attend as well. But we'll set that date once we have been instructed that we're safe to gather in large assemblies. But Dr. Bowen has some exciting news about what's going to be happening next Friday. Typically, our seniors walk through, we do a parade, and they go through the hallways in their cap and gowns, to the applause of all the students and the teachers, but that's not available this year, is it, Dr. Bowen? So what have y'all had planned for our seniors?
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. Hello, Mr. Jones and school board members. Thank you for letting me talk today. We are going to have, we're going to celebrate the class of 2020 with a vehicle, senior graduation parade. So it's going to be in the vehicle, and it's going to be on Friday, May 22nd. It will begin at 7:00, and that is when our graduation was originally planned. We will start at the elementary school, and then we will go through Highway 11 and go through the middle school, and then into the high school. And we'll use this time not only to celebrate our seniors, and we're asking to decorate their vehicles, and parents to decorate their vehicles also, but we'll use this town, this time to distribute caps and gowns, scholarships, stoles, awards, cords, yearbooks, and anything else that we have for our seniors. We are excited. I know our seniors are excited. We want to do something for them. We miss them so much, and we know that this is not the ideal senior year. So this is just one of those things that we can do, and we invite y'all to come out and support our seniors and celebrate with us as we celebrate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Just to clarify, Dr. Bowen, that parade will start on the elementary campus in McNeil, is that correct?
Yes, it will start on the elementary campus, and then it will go on Highway 11, and it will come into our campus on the north entrance, and then go around the high school, and then it will end on the south entrance of the high school.
Awesome. Thank you for that information, Dr. Bowen. Just want to encourage everyone to come out and find you a parking place along that route, toot your horn, wave at our seniors, holler, scream from a social distance, whatever you would like to do. I know our seniors will really, really appreciate that. And Dr. Bowen, they will have a great assembly line set up once they get to the high school, because our seniors are excited about picking up those caps and gowns and other things, because you're really not graduated until you get a cap and gown, right? So I know they're excited about that. So, Dr. Bowen, thank you, and your graduation committee for putting this together, and it's going to be a fun time for our seniors, and hey, you never know, this might start a tradition as we move forward. I'm excited about that. So thank you so much, and again, we'll be getting more information out on our traditional graduation ceremony as soon as our state agencies allow us to gather in large groups. Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Mr. Jones, I will conclude the superintendent report with our Blue Devil Code. Fourth quarter is perseverance is our character trait, and our quote this week for the school district was quoted by Zig Ziglar. Zig Ziglar stated, "When obstacles arise, you change your direction to reach your goal. You do not change your decision to get there." And I just think that says a lot about what our Blue Devil family has accomplished during this pandemic. Our parents, our teachers, our students, our Blue Devil family, we have not changed any of our educational goals. We've just had to change the direction of how we are going to achieve those goals during this pandemic. So I'm just super proud of all of our Blue Devil stakeholders, and I love them, and I appreciate their perseverance during this pandemic. And that will conclude our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin, and thank you for your leadership. You've been stepping outside the box a lot, so we appreciate it, and all of our administration is doing the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item seven, consider approving the following financial items. And if it's okay with Warren, we'll choose A through S. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approving the following financial items, A through S.
Thank you, Ms. Burge.
Second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for the second. Okay, no discussion. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item eight, bond issue. Do I have a motion to consider approving to pay Warston Smith Pay Application Number
I make a motion to consider approving to pay Warston Smith Pay Application Number 15.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And thank you, Ms. Burge, for the second. Any discussion?
I'd like to find if they still are right.
Are they right?
Yes, it's all right. One more second. No.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 8B, consider approving to pay J.Ban Company Pay Application Number 12. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harry.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Burge, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda, item number nine. A, yes?
Yes.
A through I. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the next one? Thank you, Mr. Harry. All in favor of the consent agenda, A through I, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Out of 10 policies, we'll do 10A, consider approving the updates to school board policy section D, fiscal management. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10B, consider rescinding policy DGVA non-sufficient funds check collection. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to consider rescinding policy DGVA non-sufficient check collection.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Burge, for the second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, consider approving the resignation of.
Do you want to do that?
Ooh, this will be tough. I need to recuse myself during this one, and I'll pass it to the secretary, which would be Mr. Fraser.
Yes.
So you got this one, this resignation, so it should be all right, but anyway, take
So item number 11, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Burge? Second. There's been motion and second that we consider approving the resignation of Ms. Rebecca Eschmidt, she's the PRC Middle School Student Services Coordinator. Any discussion? No discussion? All opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, no discussion. Motion passes.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to keep it.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Thank you. Item 12, it's on the amended part. Consider approving to transfer four mobile classroom units to Hazelhurst School District at no cost to Prowl River County School District.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge, for the second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for the second. Any questions or discussion?
I was just curious as to how it come up about the donation. Was it put out as if it was?
Mr. Warren, or could you bring up, Mr. Warren Bowen? In the past, when we have, if these trailers are removed, you've had the pace now to remove them.
I remember something about that.
But, Mr. Bowen, could you talk about the trailers that are being moved to Hazelhurst School District, and how that come about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak on that. You know, to move, to move through that would be almost as much of the cost to put it installed. And so not only you have to pay for that, but you have to also find a place to dispose of them. I've done so many projects with school districts that, you know, some school districts, some school districts are a whole lot fortunate than others, and some need help. And so I saw a situation in Hazelhurst where they needed classroom space with a bag, but really could not afford to build them. And I looked at our situation and said, you know, that may be a good idea. It'd keep us from spending money, spending money, and also keep them in, within some school district in the school, in the state. So some time ago, I got with TJ about it, and we talked a little bit about it, and turned out that they would, you know, I asked and I offered to see if they would be interested. They said yes. And so that's how we got where we are now, just really trying to help another school district at the end of the day. You know, to help educate their kids at the same time, that's, that's how we got there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen, so this is a win-win situation for them as well as us, because we will not have to pay to have those removed, correct?
That's correct.
Question, so if those buildings were not going to the Hazelhurst City Student District, we were going to have to just dispose them, demolish them, is that what?
Yep, pay, you had, you had, we had to pay to move them and pay, pay to, to, to demolish them, that's correct.
And, and I'm, and I'm correct in saying that we did put that in the newspaper, trying to get bids on to begin with, we didn't receive any bids.
Mr. Burleson, are you available on this? I don't want to speak out, we have advertised in the past for mobile homes for bids and we have not received bids. Mr. Burleson, have you been following the conversation and can you speak in reference to that?
Yes, we, we did not receive any bids for the, the trailers before and I don't expect to receive bids for trailers. You know, when, if we, if we're able to, to get, get them off our property at no cost to us, that, that's a win, that's a win.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burleson.
The, the other thing we got to remember is that you guys are in a zone now, in a wind zone, that in actuality, portable classrooms are not allowed. The wind load is too high. And so at, at, at some point, even someone wanted on that end warned them by law code, they wouldn't go to the install. Because of the wind loads.
All right, there's no further questions, a call for a vote, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item thirteen, consider approving the construction agreement with Colony Construction for the South Carrier Campus Project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Burge, for the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Harry, for the second. Hey, open the floor for questions.
I'll follow my door while we do.
I'm working on, Mr. Burge. I think he might have stepped away. I actually have a question, because we kind of received the details of this kind of at last minute and I wasn't able to go through it. Mr. Warren, could you kind of give us a gist of exactly what we're looking at here?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I would love to. What, what, what we have is a contract that, that is open to allow us to decrease it as we go along. What we agreed to is that, at this particular point, is that if we can reduce it by about two hundred thousand dollars, give us, give us in place where we need to be as a school district. And so I got with Colony Construction to ensure that, that, that that door was open. I got with the legal side to make sure that that door was open. And, and, and in addition to that, we also covered the, the, the potential cost increase that may, that may come out of this, 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 this pandemic that we're dealing with. And so all those areas have been addressed and the door is open for us to negotiate. We have it, we have certainly more than two hundred thousand dollars that we can actually decrease this, this project with. But I wanted to make sure I left it open because we may find more. What we cannot do is go, go beyond ten percent. The state procurement laws will not allow us to reduce that contract by, by more than ten percent. And so this allows us to at least start getting dirt while the season is getting right for it. While we agree to go on and reduce, you know, work to reduce those costs. And I'll give you one example of how we reduce costs. Of that, of the contract, a large, that, well, the, the, the alternate number one is an, is an expensive alternate. But it is driven by parking lots more than it is anything. Turns out that asphalt has decreased in price significantly. And on top of that, as a school, we can buy, buy state contract. By buying it by way of state contract, the product itself, it, it keeps, it keeps any contractor or subcontractor from marking it up before we get it. And so they have agreed, we're moving, so we'll look at cost savings on that, where we get a chance to buy the asphalt direct. And yet they're still responsible for installing and, and, you know, and making sure it's right. But trying to make sure we take every opportunity to save every penny. And that's the whole gist of that contract. I will say that our attorneys from Adams and Reese have done a fantastic job protecting us as it relates to this, this pandemic that we're going through. And, and, and the reason for that is because right now prices are fluctuating all over the place. Nobody knows who's going to go to work or what's going to stop here, if it's going to be prolonged. So they were just absolutely brilliant in putting together some, some language that protects our school district as a whole. And so I take my hat off to them, so. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, I do want to emphasize to our school board members, Adams and Reese, that's Jim Keith's firm. They worked with our architects and Mr. Bowen, we had concerns, we wanted to be protected in this contract through the pandemic. So we didn't want to see, due to the pandemic, that construction prices rise, our delays and things of that nature. So they worked very closely with the architects and Mr. Bowen to protect us. And so our attorney, Mr. Keith, his firm, has reviewed this contract and they are comfortable presenting this contract to you this evening. Also, he mentioned it also gives us the opportunity to reduce as we go through this project as well on those parking lines. Because as you know, if you have filled up your car lately, gas prices have greatly reduced. So it gives us that opportunity when that comes. And that's what he was talking about through state contracts and purchasing the asphalt. We have maneuverability within that contract to reduce some things that we're ordering through the contractor themselves. So it's, they've done a lot of work on this and I'm very pleased with the product, with the contract that we have received and Jim Keith is as well.
And is that why this is time sensitive, is because we're trying to get those savings while we can?
Not so much savings, just to get the project started. You know, of course, the project can't start until the contract is approved. And the reason it took so long is because of the concern that we have. We wanted to dot every i across every t and protect ourselves. So we sent this through our attorneys to, basically, they had to kind of negotiate. There were some things that they wanted and we wanted, so they had to negotiate back and forth and that took a little bit longer. And so we, we actually, the architect delivered this at four twenty today and we scanned it and got it to you. You know, but your attorney, when your attorney has looked through it, actually, they were involved in negotiations and drawing up of this contract. So the only time sensitive issue is we can't start till it's approved. So if you table it till next month, then that's, we're going to have to wait till next month. It will delay at that time, that's, that's the only time sensitive issue.
So if we decide to approve and go forward with this contract, how soon are they prepared to actually start construction?
I'll refer to Mr. Warren on that, have you had conversations with Colony, if we approve the contract tonight, when can they start work?
I, I, I would think that, you know, of our, everything that has to be reviewed and set up, within a couple of weeks, we can get things started. You know, you have to go in and do, you know, get your, 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 your office set up and get people mobilized and, and all of that. So I would think in a couple of weeks, we, we may have boots on the ground. And that's pretty quick. And my task for Colony is, it's been just a pleasant opportunity to work with them. You know, if, if their product is as half as good as they have been in working with, we're going to get an excellent project. So, you know, about two weeks, I would think. Now, I will, I will, after, after, since it's approved tonight, I will make that call for Steven in the morning, Steven is my contact with, with the construction firm. And I will make contact with him in the morning and let him know, okay, it's time to rock and roll, how quick can you be on site? And I get that information back to TJ immediately and he can let you guys know an exact date, if that's okay with you.
Okay, so you're saying you estimate that we may be able to have boots on around, somewhere around two weeks, but they'll be prepared in the morning to start doing the preliminary, getting stuff ready and?
Well, they, 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 they are already a few steps ahead of us, they've done quite a bit of the things that they would, that they would normally do after the contract's signed. So, you know, they're acting in good faith on, on, you know, they've acted in good faith in going and getting ahead of and getting ready for this, this approval. So, yes, sir, there are a lot of things we will not have to wait for, that we typically have to wait for, they, they are ready to rock and roll. And Steven and I talk pretty consistently. But, but, but to be, to be firm about it, tomorrow morning, I will call them, let them know it's been cleared. Contract should be submitted to them within a day or so and give me a date, a date, a date that you're going to mobilize. And I get that time directly to TJ, so you have an exact date to mobilize.
I have one more question, as far as the cost of this contract, can you hear me okay with my mask on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as far as the contract price, are we still working within the parameters of what the board has already approved financially?
Yes, and we're just trying to get it under that, because that's what we, we just know we can. So we, we, me and TJ and, and the, and the superintendent, we want y'all to be like, okay, y'all did a great job on that. That's what I wanted, to be sure, so.
Awesome job, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Then I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Did we get the motion in the second?
Yeah.
Do we want to do an individual one?
And that's up to you guys.
She's going to know you're only there for a while. Yes.
All in favor of item thirteen, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Motion to go into closed session to discuss going into executive session for a student, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
Closed session.
Close session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. All in favor of going into closed session, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, we are now in a closed session. Welcome back. There was no action taken during the executive session, we're now back in open session. There are two, one hour eleven, that's the board information, it's just the information about the calendar, the work calendar, the district calendar. Does any of the board members have any questions concerning the information?
Yeah, I guess, not just information about the calendar, I think, I understand whether there's anything that the board needs to take action on. Time sensitive basis that it needs to be added to that calendar to remind us, is that the, that's a calendar?
Calendar, I think that's what she said, yeah.
Yeah, the intent was that there's something that the board needs to be going to add, it would be put on that calendar. If we discover something, we look at our policy sets, it needs to be done at a certain time, then it could be added to that calendar, that's my understanding.
That's great. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Burge, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you for joining us.